Okay, so the time is eight thirty seven PM on May seventh twenty one. And I'd like to call this special meeting of the Human Relations Commission to order. In the interest of the public health and safety pursuant to the Governor's Executive Order and twenty nine twenty, members of the Human Relations Commission and staff are participating in this meeting by teleconference. And according to the executive order, the public may this may view this meeting online, but not in City Hall Building A at two seventy six Fourth Avenue in Chula Vista. The city launched a virtual commenting portal e-comment that allows residents to comment and participate in the meeting from their own homes. You can find the link to e-comment at www.chulavistaca.gov/virtualmeetings. Your comments must be received before I call the close of the commenting period in order to be considered. After the commenting period is closed, I will announce a brief pause to allow the commissioners' time to read any comments that had that have been received. If you have any difficulty or need assistance with e-comment during the meeting, please call six one nine four oh nine five nine two seven and a human resource staff will assist you. Would the secretary please call the roll?
All right, Chair Martinez Montes.
President.
Vice Chair Branch.
Vice Chair Branch. Present, present.
Thank you, Commissioner Bieber. Commissioner Bieber.
Here, I just had to unmute.
Oh, thank you, Commissioner Felix.
Present.
Commissioner Gutierrez.
Present.
Commissioner Gutierrez.
Present.
Commissioner Kinayub.
Present.
Commissioner Lake.
Present.
Commissioner Medina.
Present.
And Commissioner Ratner.
Present.
Thank you.
You're muted, Paula. Thank you. So, public comment is the section on the agenda for members of the public to address the board on items that are not listed on the agenda. I will now call for a two-minute pause for the public comment or for the public to submit any final public comments. Commissioners, as a reminder, please refresh the view on your screen to ensure new comments appear. And I believe the new agenda has been posted in the chat.
It's not letting me share the screen for whatever reason, so I'll just let you know when the two minutes are up.
Okay, thank you.
Two minutes are up.
The commenting period for public comment is now closed. Have commissioners had enough time to read the submitted comments? Commit, um, Commission Secretary Ladrón de Guevara, would you please announce for the record the number of comments received?
There were zero comments received.
So, the next item, we'll move into action items. The next item on the agenda is item three point one, Commission Discussion and Action Regarding the Terms to Recommend to the City Council for Establishing a Task Force That Would Advise the Council Regarding the Disposition and Replacement of the Columbus Statue at Discovery Park and Other Related Matters. Does staff have a presentation?
What I do have for you tonight, before you begin this, is I can share the council action and what was being asked. So hopefully this works really quick. Can you see my screen? All right. So, right here is what the the action council took. So, a motion was made, seconded to direct staff to currently remove the Columbus Statue from Discovery Park, designate October twelfth as Indigenous Peoples' Day in the city of Chula Vista, and they made a referral to the Human Relations Commission to bring back a recommendation for council consideration within two months on the formation and duties of a task force, which would include designated members of the Human Relations Commission, Parks and Rec Commission, Cultural Arts Commission, the Kumyei Community, and the Sons and Daughters of Italy. They'll be tasked with making recommendations regarding the disposition of the statue, renaming of Discovery Park, and related actions. So, that's why you have this item in front of you tonight due to the two-month turnaround. We made it a special item for the commission to discuss tonight.
Uh, Commissioner Millie.
So, I am trying to move us forward and of course, if anyone has questions. So, I think what we need to talk about is the composition, the appointment process of these individuals. I'm not sure what the duration means. I guess the duration of all of this, the meetings or whatnot, and the meeting place, scope of services. So, I have some, some already, some suggestions. And, um, and then, and maybe that this is a place where we could start. So, talking about the composition, I definitely took into consideration everything that was part of that action that was taken by, by council. I personally thought that, um, talking about HRC would be nice. I'd like to be involved and I, and I heard also you, Chair Paula, also mention you'd like to be involved. But I thought the HRC, two members, Parks and Rec two, and I was hoping to pull in the individuals that made the, that made the motion to support the HRC, which was Nicole Enriquez and Ashley Padilla. Two members from the Cultural Arts Commission, and I have a recommendation on one of those individuals already. I don't know if we need those recommendations, but two members, two members of our Kumyei Community, they would be tribal leader, leaders that have been involved in this process since day one. There was an individual, you know, Sons and Daughters of Italy was mentioned there. There has been an individual has written to our commission. She has been in contact also with me. I've learned a lot about just her work and, and the sons and daughters. And so, if it does, you know, the mayor, I think, was the one who made the motion. It does say Sons and Daughters of Italy, so if it was, uh, there would be one individual from there. I also thought of a public history, I'm sorry, public memory and monument scholar. So, I have a name from an individual at San Diego State University who has, this is his field, and also could be very helpful as we talk about reconceptualizing monuments, et cetera. And then I thought leaving one open for a community member. So, my numbers look like two, four, six, eight, nine, ten, eleven would be that. As far as appointment, I think that, I mean, I think I would like to see the HRC be the ones to guide this. And so, maybe, you know, I don't know how we do the, you know, officially the appointment process, but us being able to support that appointment process. And then, as far as meeting places and all of those things, you know, I'm not too sure how much we need to, how much details we need to add on that. But I was thinking, putting, I mean, the group would need to put a timeline together. I think, once we have the composition of the group and the appointment process and whatnot, then we can get that group together to already start creating some dates where we can meet and make these decisions. So, I'm not sure if there was something more so. I also will say this, that, um, this group is going to decide where the statue goes. This group is going to decide if there's something to be replaced there, such as an art piece. There's been new conversation about putting a marker there, and the marker would be something that documents what, what happened, what, what took place, you know, this, this moment in time where, you know, and, and so that they would do that. They would make a recommendation, put some names together, and put a recommendation to the Parks and Rec for the park. And, and lastly, um, maybe something just on a friendly note would be offering a framework to the, to the city in relation to how to work with gifts, how to work with namings, and how to even look at reconceptualizing art pieces and monuments or public history in, in these public spheres. So, those are the, the charges of that group and I ensure the, the composition. So, I'm open to listen and, but like I said, trying to move us forward as quickly as possible.
Uh, Com- Commissioner Gutierrez.
Yeah, thank you for that, Commissioner Medina. I think you've done a lot of work in this and put a lot of thought and effort. And I, I, you know, I, I like to be, if there's no other discussion, I like to, I mean, I like to make a motion to adopt your recommendation. Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I, if I might add a couple thoughts to that in terms of how these things often work in relationships with the other commissions, just for the, the group to, to think about. If that's okay, Madam Chair, Commissioner Medina.
Yes, yes.
Um, the, um, one of the things to consider, um, is through, in the nomination process, frequently when other groups are designated for participation in, in a committee of this sort, that, that group is asked to choose the, the, the parties from their group that represent. It gets a little tricky when one group decides for that group, you know, who that should be. And so, there's good and bad to that, right? The, the good to it is, that's kind of the normal course and, and, you know, committee typically does choose for itself, right? Who the appropriate representative is. More likely than not, Commissioner Medina, given the interest of the people you had in mind, that's who they would end up choosing. But the, the process for them choosing that is good, that's the good part about it. The bad part about it is, um, you need to get that on their agenda. And, you know, what we, what I think the, the objective of the council was is get all the decisions you guys are making about your structure back to the council, which can happen really quickly. I mean, I think you could get this back to the council as early as June fifteenth for the council to bless what you're coming up with. And then it needs to go out to those different groups, right? If, in fact, you're going to embrace this, that process I just outlined for nomination, for them to choose the people. Um, I think you, it all coming to you certainly would be, would be fine. But ultimately, the typical mechanism for final appointments goes to the council itself. So, the, the, in effect, the, the, the different commissions nominating folks to submit to you, certainly you soliciting from the community at large, you know, yourselves, and that coming to you could form a slate of people that you then tender the council for them to make the appointment. Because ultimately, right, they're advising the council, you know, regarding these things as opposed to you. So, sorry, I know that sounds bureaucratic and maybe a little bit cumbersome, but I, consistent with Commissioner Medina's thoughts, I just wanted to add that layer of thought in, in terms of how things typically work with this.
And if I could just add one more thing, as you were going down the list, the community member. The way this is looking, I think their council's asking for, once you have how the numbers and we reach out, if we follow Glenn's direction on who those people are, who that community member would be. So, adding that one in, I think we would be looking for you for what that name would be.
Yeah, and, and also, I can also support with the, you know, our Kumyei leadership as well. And so, I don't know if that's also part of it, because, I mean, you just can't put a call out and say, you know. So, I think lean on us in that way as well. So, so I'm, I'm super cool with that, I'm, I'm good with that. Um, I, I, so I came out with those eleven, and then the terms were those four. Is there anything else that we need to, um, kind of, uh?
Wait. Is there anything else that we need to weigh in?
Yeah, I, I, um, and I'm sorry, I, I think that was to me, Madam Chair. Um, yeah, I think you're right in terms of the, the, the duration, how often they meet, where they meet. I think that is something that you could leave to the task force itself. That might go, you know, in your recommendation to council to communicate to them that you thought about that and you're leaving it, you know, to the task force, you know, itself. The only other thing I would add is that, um, given the nature of this task force, um, this would be a, a group that would meet, that, that would be a Brown Act committee. They would meet in public and would need kind of the, um, staff support structure to go with that. I had a feeling you'd probably want it to be that anyway, but, um, given the nature of this thing, I wanted to make sure you knew that legally it would need to be a, um, Brown Act compliant group. In theory, they could, as they deem appropriate, like you guys do, create ad hoc subcommittees, you know, if they wanted to be nimble and go off and analyze some things with some private meetings and report back to the larger group, but the group itself would need to be Brown Act compliant. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Do you mind, can I recap real quick, just to make sure I understand, just so that we're, we're, we're capturing everything? So, I have the, the numbers for the proposed work group, but there's still that community member. And can I get some clarification on what that looks like? And then the other piece of it is, um, the recommendation that you've been tasked with bringing back to council includes the duties of the task force. So, there are some specifically named within the council action, which is, you know, making recommendation on the, the disposition of the statue, renaming of the Discovery Park. And so, I would also like that we flesh out all the things that you would want for this group, because I know there were other items that were talked about at council. So, making sure that gets flushed out when we bring that back to council as well, which I have Names for Parks Framework, Public History. But Commissioner Medina, I know you talked about like a marker or something in that space. So, I don't know how detailed we need to get on this.
Statue was one of the ones he identified and was listed on council. So, it'd just be replacement of the statue, whatever form that would take.
I, I do know that they, they like that word marker. And so, if you were to say statue slash artwork slash marker, that also might help with just making sure that we're real clear and explicit about that. And then, as far as the community member, as far as criteria, um, I, I just felt like if there was somebody in our community that had been involved in this process that had showed involvement, um, and, and we left that open, you know? Um, I, I don't know if we need to put any more specific criteria to that. But like I said, I, I just wanted it to seem like there was a voice of just a Chula Vista resident that has been involved with this process and, and, and has been, like, like I said, it's, it's been a-
Yeah, I, um, or go ahead, Commissioner Branch.
Um, I, in terms of the community member, I was just thinking that there was a student, a high school student, I believe, who spoke. And I'm not saying necessarily would be that person, but maybe you might think about having a younger person, a high school student or young college or, you know, just a younger teenager or early, you know, younger, young adult type person.
Yeah, I, I like that idea. I do think, and, and I'm glad that you said it, Commissioner Medina, I do think that, you know, um, you know, I agree, having the Kumyei community represented, you know, having the experts there is also important. I just would like to, and, and maybe having that one person from the city, um, so that the city or, um, I shouldn't say resident, but someone who lives in Chula Vista is represented on this task force is important, just because of the level of backlash, you know, that, that, um, we may get already, you know, folks are saying, you know, that folks are coming in. And so, anyway, I think for that reason, just making sure that, I don't know, and, and it may be hard to find an expert that lives in Chula Vista, but just making sure that we, we have representation from the city, um, is important. Commissioner Felix.
Um, I just wanted to, um, I support, um, Vice Chair Branch's thought on having a youth individual there, because the testimony that was given that night was very powerful. And one of the most powerful testimony came from youth, so that was very important. Also, um, what, what district is this located, the park? I, I've never actually been to the park, but, um, what, what district is it? If we are going to have a member of the community, I don't know if it would be appropriate to have someone who actually lives in that particular district, who is more likely to utilize that park or has a closer affiliation with the park. Um, because like someone like me, I'm in District one, two, and I've never, um, you know, that's not a park that I frequent.
I'm fairly confident it's District one, but it is close to the border of two and one. Do you have the map you could pull up?
I'm, I'm gonna pull it up right now, see if I can figure it out.
Yeah, because there's portions of Rancho Del Rey, the parts of Rancho Del Rey, there's portions of Del Rey that are in two, but I'm pretty sure this part's in one.
Yeah, I think it's right on that, on that border. But I, I would, yeah, I think it's one.
You know, I, I just want to put out there, I know it's getting late, but, um, maybe, maybe, I don't know how specific a criteria, Courtney, we need to put, but I, I think, uh, I'm taking away somebody that, that has, um, you know, somebody who has some kind of a real, um, more explicit affiliation with Chula Vista. But I don't know if you all want to put youth, I don't know. You know, for me, I think it's so important that we have individuals that are familiar with this process and been invested. I, I don't know if you want to put a call out, we could ask for people to kind of apply to that process, and then we could vet that through a HRC process, I don't know. But, um, but I know that, like, I don't, how, how can we get through this a little quicker?
Yeah, can I make a recommendation? So, for the June meeting, since we need to be back to council in two months, what I would recommend is for the June meeting, I can reach out to each of the commissions that we're asking for representatives from and ask them to agendize it during their next meeting. So, hopefully they meet in the next month, get those names. If, um, Commissioner Medina, you could work with the Kumyei and the Sons and Daughter of Italy. I feel like you have the, the closest connections with those groups to designate their representatives. And then it sounds like there's some different ideas within the commission for who that community member would be. Maybe if we could have that discussion at the June meeting, um, and then finalize that to take it to council, and then we could take it to council on July thirteenth. Glenn, does that sound like an appropriate? And we can formalize what these items are going to be and put it on the next agenda that I, that I've heard from Commissioner Medina tonight, or if there's anything else we get over the next couple of weeks, we can add it to what those recommended actions would be that would be taken to council.
So, um, I think that's good, I, I, but I'm, I'm maybe missing a step. You, you're absolutely right to want to solicit those commissions to make sure there's an appetite for participating, right? Sometimes I've had this experience, it was terrible. We had this great idea about who would want to be in something, and like, yeah, we're gonna have this person and that person, and we got to the commission, they're like, we're not doing that, we don't want to do that. I don't think you're going to have that issue here, but it is a good gut check between now and this going to the city council to have at least reached out to the chairs, you know, of those commissions to check on that. But Courtney, are you, I was thinking that this would be able to be put together, at least the structure of it, right? And then have that agendized for the city council on June fifteenth. And then, um, have the, them approve the structure, and then everyone go off and go through the appointment process, whatever it's going to be, and bring that back to the council as soon as possible to do the formal appointments of all the different people chosen through the process. Was that what you were thinking for July? Because I thought we could go as quickly as June to get the council to buy into the structure, June fifteenth.
I, I think we could, I, I think this is, listen, I'm-
You're thinking July for that.
I will know, I'm the one, I think, that's maybe parsing words, which it's usually not, that's not-
Me.
Yeah, I know, so go figure. Let me just share this really quick, so it might just be the way we're interpreting it. So, um, the way it reads, but again, this is just kind of the overview, which would include designated members of the human re- the, to this part. So, I'm reading it as we're bringing back names from the groups instead of just a number of individuals, but maybe I'm overthinking it.
Does that, I read it as, this would include members of the Human Relations Commission. So, it includes members of the Human Relations Commission, Parks and Rec, Cultural Arts Commission, Sons and Daughters of Italy, to be tasked with making recommendations during the- like-
So, maybe I-
I read it as, we, like, members of these bodies are deciding, is that right?
No, I think, I think Glenn, if, if we're not required to provide the names, but rather we want the, the makeup of the group, not the official designees, then I think we could absolutely go in June.
Yeah, I think that's what I, I understood to be the action. Courtney, I, I see you reading in designated, I think that's just quick clerk kind of, um-
Yeah.
Um, minutes resolution, verb tense, as opposed to the concept of it. So, yes, I think to, to June with the structure and then the implementation of all the selections with council blessing, you know, that with an appointment process at that next meeting.
Can, can I ask a question? Commissioner Medina, could you just review the list of what you have?
Yeah, I have two HRC, two Parks and Rec, two Cultural Arts, two Kumyei, one, um, Sons and Daughters of, of Italy, a public monument scholar, and a community member.
And can I confirm the community member would be selected by the Human Relations Commission? Is that fair to say?
I would like that, that'd be great.
And according to the Discovery Park, and the Discovery Park in the District one, so we might come in from the district, John McCain wouldn't know, so.
Yeah, so and I assume the commission would be choosing the public, uh, memory monument scholar or history scholar as well, too, right? Both those positions chosen by HRC.
Who is, who is the chair of the Youth Commission?
There's no members of the Youth Commission right now.
Oh, it was, it wasn't formed?
Yeah, after when COVID hit, it kind of never got the legs under it. But I think with the Human Relations Commission making the selection, I think you all can flush out, and it seems like you have some ideas of who might be a good fit for that. And if you want, we can do work in soliciting and making it public, but if there's already some ideas of who you might want to include, maybe reach out to those people, we can, you know, see if they'd be interested.
Yeah, so then going back to the recommendation made by Commissioner Medina and with Glenn's blessing, it sounds like we're just coming up with the number of people from each of those bodies that would be part of the task force.
I think that, and Glenn, would it also be including the list of the things that are in the council action? So, the-
Yeah, all that.
Disposition of the statue, the renaming of the-
Yeah.
And then the other things I heard from Commissioner Medina that I think we would bring back with this item, just to confirm, was like how parks are named, or naming of parks in general, correct? If I heard right? The framework for GIFs and naming, the, some part of public history, and I can talk to Commissioner Medina a little bit more of this, and then a replacement statue, marker, artwork. So those, that's what I have. Is that accurate for what we would be bringing back to council, that this task force would be working on?
That sounds right. Courtney, I can help with the final verbiage, so we can get the formal term sheet of that worked out. But I think you covered everything that I heard from Commissioner Medina.
Please check in with me, both of you as well, so I can make sure that we're clear on those steps.
Hundred percent.
Yes.
Okay, so we did have a motion by Commissioner Goldinas to adopt the recommendations that Commissioner Medina put forward, plus this addition on, you know, on the list of what the task force would do. I would like to second that with the additions.
Do we need two minutes, Glenn?
Provide for public input before you actually vote.
Yes, yes. Apologies.
No, no, you're good.
So can we put two minutes on the clock?
Get any kind of, yeah, if you get any input that suggests, you know, a different direction or anything, it would be within, Madam Chair, your prerogatives or others to incorporate that into your deliberations and final action.
Two minutes are up.
Have commissioners had an opportunity to review comments submitted? Secretary, could you, for the record, tell us how many comments were in support or opposition?
There were zero comments received.
Okay, with, without any comments, we had a motion from Commissioner Goldinas to adopt the recommendations provided by Commissioner Medina. And I would like to second that with the additions on the delineations of what the task force would do. Can we, does that sound right? In terms of the motions? Okay, can we take a vote, please?
Yes, so Chair Martinez Montes?
Aye.
Vice Chair Branch?
Aye.
Commissioner Bayberry let me know that she left the meeting a little bit ago, so. Commissioner Felix?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldinas?
Aye.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Aye.
Commissioner Kina U?
Aye.
Commissioner Lake?
Aye.
Commissioner Medina?
Aye.
And Commissioner Ratner?
Aye.
Thank you.
So that motion passes with everyone voting aye present? And we've got no other business on this agenda. So I'd like to, it's, it's 9:13, and I would like to adjourn this meeting to the next regular meeting of the Human Relations Commission, scheduled for June 24th, 2021, at 6:00 PM via teleconference.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, everybody. Good night.
Thank you.
And just as our own plug, we have a lot of job openings right now.